...for August 13th, 2013 order. Everybody standing, joining us the same.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The agenda's before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff? None? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. First order, item on the agenda is the sheriff's report. And we'll get that over to Mr. Campbell here, sir.
Thank you. Item number one, two, and three, actually, number one and two I'm going to turn over to Mr. Isco now.
Yes, we had several streets for complaints about speeding in Devon, then Orion, Andro, and, she's the last one I gave you, Bill, I forget her name, Claireview, that we did the speed zone study on, and the sheriff's department will look at it and hopefully we can do something with it.
What was that first street, Ken? What was the first one?
Orion, Devon, D E V O.
Thank you.
Item number two is, we have a marathon gonna happen on September 8th. It's the Hall of Fame City Challenge. We've been meeting for, I don't know, six, seven months. I have Lieutenant Darrow here because we have some concerns. At the last meeting we had last week, I indicated to Mr. Mears that the township wants their money up front this year. He said, "Okay, not a problem." So we've all worked out our possible costs, but I do believe we're gonna need a contract that Eric's gonna have to write for him to sign and for us to sign. I know the sheriff's department has a lot of concerns about some of the streets that were totally closing. Basically, they're gonna land lots of residents for four to five hours possibly, and Lieutenant Darrow would like to address the board.
Hi, will you go up there? I'm Lou Darrow from the sheriff's office. We have a meeting, the sheriff's office, state patrol, city of Canton, Georgia, this is the city of Canton, where we do have a portion of the township. And the issue we're gonna have is some of our residents, some of your residents are gonna be landed. We have a flyer that was put on the residence home on 20th Street, basically says from the hours of 7:48 a.m. to 12:25 p.m., it's gonna be very difficult, impossible for you to get out of your residence. So, we're not saying we can't do this, we can and we will, but just be prepared for the phone calls. We're just shutting down, state patrol's gonna shut down Bolt from Whipple to the interstate. So...
Really, all four lanes?
Yes, because instead of running east and west on Bolt, they're gonna run north to Sullivan and cross Bolt.
Yeah, they're gonna go from Westmoreland to Lakeside crossing 20 foot.
No.
So they're not only coming down if they're gonna cross back over?
No, they're not coming down at all, they're just crossing. So, you know, the runners should get spread out. When are you opening, when are you closing?
Yeah, but why would you close the road for the entire stretch if they're only coming across Westmoreland, for that direction?
You don't know the times that the runners are gonna be crossing.
If I could address that. The reason, we've looked at several different ways on how to do this, and to prevent, to prevent all the little side streets in there having traffic and residents coming out on there and getting in the middle of the running lanes, simple saying is to close it.
The runners will be spread out. It's not a matter of saying, they're gonna be there between this time and this time. They're gonna be spread out for a long period of time, you know, because of different levels of runner. You know, essentially, that's closing for a longer period of time to get all the runners across.
You know, 20th Street's the same way, that they're running east and west on 20th Street. Which again, is, it's gonna be difficult, there are a lot of homes there. So, we just want you to be prepared. We want some complaints, those goes forward. Now, one thing that we learned is, last year they had around 45,000 participants. As of last week, they had 700 paid participants. So, due to the small numbers, the amount of time the roads close could be created because not all of those are marathoners. And the fact that we got less numbers, that we created gaps and we can get people through. I mean, this is worst-case scenario, that we end up with 2,700, 3,000 runners, and there's a steady stream for four, five hours up here, here, you know, a few here, a few there, you can't even run.
Was there any discussion amongst the security meeting about this type of communication going out, or is this something literally that we stumbled across? Because, you know, last year when this went on during it, it was different brand, totally different partners, I mean, there was frequent communication, here's what we're gonna do. In fact, they reached out to township, let us know. I'm not exactly a fan of somebody telling our residents that this is gonna happen without our prior awareness.
There was some conversations about notifying the residents that are on the actual route. Did they give us a head up on what they were sending them? No. We told them that they need to be notified. And they've received phone calls, and Lisa's office also received phone calls about them being grouped. One lady claimed that they hung up on her, which I addressed at the last meeting, and they denied that.
What, I guess, just for conversation, what confidence level does the board have? Because I don't know, I can't, I guess people, my confidence level would be, and that that's being done properly. Because it's not the promoter that's going to fill the calls, it's my office and all of you on a Sunday morning into Sunday afternoon, and people are gonna be furious. All kidding aside, people are going to be furious. When I keep it out my driveway for four hours because of a private event, I think you're gonna have problems.
Say, quite frankly, I mean, no different than last year, if the safety forces aren't, are, you know, feeling a level of comfort, so I, you guys, on our township's behalf, are fired, but then our road as well, if there's any combination, all of the above?
I think, Lieutenant Darrow, we're confident we can make it happen safely, but we are also confident that you will have some angry residents.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay? We can do it safely. One of the ways to do it safely is to close down that road so that there's no misstep and somebody get hit by a car there or something. Obviously, we don't want that to happen, but to do it safely, we guarantee that you'll get some, you know, some splashback from residents on the way it has to be done. You know, there's gonna be some scenarios in the township where people cannot, because of the terrain, people cannot get out of their driveways. And we address that with the promoter, and the promoter said, "Well, somebody, they'd have volunteers or somebody standing at the driveway to help them get out." But that doesn't help us, because once you send that traffic one way, now you've created a hazard for us, and so it gets complicated.
That's how the safety concerns, I mean, what's the reality too, from the financial side of covering us, because, and I think I've been on the record prior too, saying this year going into it, well, 100% payment remitted upfront.
Well, he seemed not to have a problem with us wanting our money upfront. I know our, my total bill's over $4,000. We are, this is not a lawsuit.
And the sheriff's portion is gonna be included in our contract.
Right, that's our goal, isn't it? Sheriff would like to see is that you put ours with yours with the fire department and the road department as one bill, that's what the city's doing. They're preparing a contract and deciding.
So you have yours broken down?
Yeah. This is, this is...
Okay.
This is a projection of what our cost will be for the number of deputies, equipment that we need for this event. You can see it's gonna take a good number of deputies to do the safety check, and we have to have supervisors, and obviously we need equipment to do this, so...
Joe and Chief, I mean, what are the additional costs we're looking at on our end?
My cost is around $4,000 for manpower and, because we gotta set up, we gotta block a lot of, all the side streets coming off of roads that they're racing on, they're working with the sheriff's department, the intersections that are gonna be ours. We have to stay out there, we have to stay out there, we can't just put 'em out there and leave.
What would be the risk if plane says, "We're not in"? You have this guy still trying to run?
Yeah, you have other venue say that. I think, I wanna say the risk, I don't know the interest to the township, you'd have to rerun it.
Well, how do we run that?
Because it's only September 8th. You're barely...
Really? How do you get that, that'd be pretty difficult, wouldn't it?
Well, they have their course certified. If plane said no, I think there would be two options for them. One would be, don't run it. Two would be, try to run it without safety forces and the fire department and the road department out there, which would be difficult.
Well, I think that the second option, the township would have some leverage in the safety issue if we're trying to go down.
And I know the city's bill is...
Projection.
Their projection, I was saying, their projection is in the $32,000 range.
Can I ask you this, how much is the first person in or the race?
This projected depends on when you sign up. I believe now it's around $900 to get into it.
I think it's $35.
Let's say it's 100, they got 700 people signed up? Yeah, but most of those were signed up a long, a long time ago from, there was a discount earlier in the year, and I don't know for a fact, but I had heard that some of the folks who opted not to run last year because of the heat and delayed their registration over to this year, it was gonna be recognized in this new...
Well, all the runners are marathon runners, there are just other people that are just doing it for...
Because there's three pieces of it?
Yeah.
There's a 5K, there's a 10K, there's a half marathon.
Probably you're looking at between $50 and $60 as the average cost to be per participant to be in this, average amount.
Two, the 5K and 10K are all in the city of Canton, so they're not gonna affect the township. A half marathon and a full marathon is a lot of it's in the township.
I tell you, we're gonna get stuck holding the bill.
Well, that's, I talked to Eric earlier in the week about getting a contract and putting a date that we want our money before the race, you know, whoever the board's...
Just for discussion, for instance, it's our understanding that the city's getting 50% of the cost to them upfront from the motor.
50% of their costs are projected to be a what again?
32,000.
They're around that, we saw one of the projections, those aren't final numbers, but that was a ballpark that they're in.
We were projected around 19,000.
So if they pay the city of Canton half and ours all upfront, sorry, the math doesn't come out.
Yeah, unless he's drawing...
It's not 700, that's for you.
Unless he's drawing with some kind of sponsorship that doesn't appear to be seen.
As I said, it's nothing media, any type of media, whether it's hard paper, social media, web traffic.
And here's the other question, this board, we need to understand from our safety services aspect and what they're gonna put into us, yes, granted, hopefully we can regroup our costs, but what is the true benefit of this, to this residents of Plain Township? It's called the Hall of Fame City Challenge, and we're inconvenienced, inconvenienced the people of Plain Township for the Hall of Fame City Challenge. What's the benefit to the community by having this race?
You're not gonna argue it's bad, you're not gonna argue bad taxes this time?
Not this time, no.
Not even close.
Just to make the board aware, we have another race coming up in April, was it April? Another promoter's putting on it.
And that's the one that's endorsed and supported back by the Hall of Fame?
That's correct, they have a little... And a smaller portion is in the township on that race, it's not as big as this board.
You know, because I can remember a year ago, a lot of people, you know, were having problems getting in and out of the church, getting on the church. I was standing up there with Captain George last year, the people were upset.
It was on the 30th, that's a month, over $38 per dollar.
Between Whipple and Whipple's or Dale's. This thing tips off at 6:00 in the morning, so you're gonna have the same issues with churchgoers than you would have in the previous year.
They said they talked to all the churches on the route.
Yeah, we asked them that the last meeting, you know, a couple things. What is, do you have emergency shelter if you get over a lightning storm? Have you contacted, oh, we've contacted the churches, they know what's gonna happen, they can actually go in there if there's an emergency, so... And that fire actually come off the residence door on 20th Street?
Just came off the residence door.
Yeah, so they are asking about it.
You know, we don't know what form of communication they're having, they're telling us or communicating, that may be the only form of communication. And, you know, the other question that would go for Chief Snyder is, what happens if there's a medical emergency and we have to get into somebody, you know?
A lot of people don't, they go through their eyes and they're right under their front door.
The township's supposed to be able to last year regarding that, because I know this year the race actually runs in front of the station. And so, we're just have to break, break the stride or whatever it is to get through this, so, I understand why.
What's that board want to do? Eric, I mean, any legal advice?
I have lots.
Well, if you're gonna do it, we gotta get something ready from this person who's the promoter or whatever entity he's representing, because I do think you wanna get paid upfront. You know, I understand city of Canton's doing 50%, but what I always make sure I do with clients is get it upfront, because once they don't need you anymore, it's hard to get paid. So, I'd get paid upfront if we can, put a contract together and send it to them, if you guys are in favor.
All I'm thinking of, this isn't a legal issue, but do you all remember the gentleman who came in here?
Yeah.
How fired up he was because it was shut for 45 minutes?
Yes.
He came to three meetings. He's still mad today. You know, to me, that's all I can think, all I can see is that guy sitting there, and he was, he was reading you guys' riot act. So I know that's not a legal issue, but certainly from a practical standpoint, something I might consider. Legally, I think we probably, you know, can get a nail down and get a date certain and say, this many days before the race, we need to be paid in full, 100%, this is the amount.
Otherwise...
Otherwise, we're out.
Services are being...
Yeah.
You better find somewhere else.
And you better, yeah, I don't know what they do at that point, but I mean, if he's already talked to Joe and said he's willing to pay upfront, then I don't believe that we'll need to hold him to it.
Well, apparently it's really July.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the timing is...
This is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Draft, draft, draft the contract, it's on, you know, payment, no later than 10 days in advance, in full, I'm not, I'm not even negotiable on if it comes back, hey, can we have 50% now, 50% later?
It's hard to chase somebody around for money when they don't have you anymore.
Residents aren't gonna put a bill on that.
Yeah.
Now, as far as... We'll just need to stop it, stop it and sign off on it prior to, as to on our end.
Well, what I would do is I would do a, I would give Lisa the permission here on the record to sign on your behalf, and then we can ratify it at the next meeting, because we won't have time otherwise. Yeah, I mean, as the administrator, she has your authority on record to sign it on your behalf, and we can ratify the contract at the next meeting. Yeah. Otherwise, you're not gonna have time. So, the decision, that's your decision, obviously.
There's a meeting on the 21st of August, 12th of August, for the same marathon, everybody that's been meeting on the same marathon, at 25th and Cleveland at the tire station at 1 o'clock. I'm not gonna be able to make the meeting, but I'll send somebody, and I'm sure Lieutenant Darrow will be there, going to your Chuck's office, going to the meeting.
Well, I think the good plans that are being talked about here, you know, ensuring that people could pay, I mean, obviously there's a little bit of concern or some concern, my question would be, as this thing moves forward, as we get closer to this date certain that this is gonna happen, and if there's not a whole lot of advanced time for them to have this escrow or whatever you do for payment, to ensure that we're paying, the people are paying for our services, at what point in time and what action would the board take then to not do this or pull the pin on, you know, providing the service? Because I think you gotta be real careful, if the timing's not right, it's gonna be your fault if this didn't happen. I'm just trying to speak peacably to the board, I don't want you guys to be...
They need to race them.
I don't want you guys to be in a position to say, "Well, we said you could do it now", we said, and the guy, you know, he could be in the middle of, you know, a big news article about, pulling a pin on this thing. I'm gonna be honest with you, my gut says, "We don't need this to happen here." It's not about the money, township's not making anything off of it. We're just basically paying for the services that are gonna be utilized. There's no benefit to the residents of the township along this route, I mean, there is absolutely no benefit to holding this race here. And I'm only going by what my guts telling me. My guts telling me, why in the world would we inconvenience all of our residents for a function that is essentially promoted from another community, that we're not actually gonna have any gain from? I mean, I'm all for cooperation and working with our surrounding communities when it comes to fire, police, ambulance, those types of things, you know, mutual services, but I don't see what the benefit to Plain Township is by this inconvenience to sheriff's office, our fire department, our road department. The residents especially. And my gut tells me, pull the plug, pull the pin. I don't think there's, I don't think the costs and the benefits, rewards for our residents, the residents don't get anything out of this, other than inconvenience. Joe, you guys been working on this for how long? For the watches? Should be new since.
I'm gonna guess six months.
So, you gotta be careful. I mean, if you pull the pin, it shouldn't have pulled six months. I'm finding it, have these guys who do all this work, we're ready to go, it's 10 days away, and all of a sudden, well, you know, that can do about six months, well, I guess we really didn't do our homework, we don't know, so we're gonna pull the pin now. I don't know if you can do that.
Well, I can, based on the fact that our residents are being told for the first time, don't plan to pull out your driveway from 6:00 a.m. until noon.
Well, they said I don't for the first time, we knew that this marathon was gonna make an inconvenience. The first thing we're thinking about, I remember a nice few months ago, was safety, I was, we were worried about safety, safety was by far the most important thing for this race.
Well, I'm telling you right now, I'm on our record for those people that want to run.
We didn't know until probably six weeks ago.
Is it safe, say, no six weeks ago, we should have pulled out then? For the conversation, the city council just approved this in their last, maybe it was two weeks ago, because I think maybe it's when they approved it, so. It has been in the works, there's been a lot of questions, and some of them have been answered, and I think there's still some questions out there, but, you know, we can make it happen. I just want you to know, just like Bruce said.
This is the first time I've heard, 7:48 a.m. to 12:25?
We're talking about it, we can make it happen, though, we can make it happen. If you pull out, we're on it. We get paid through you. We don't have the confidence level that we're going to be properly compensated if we can do this without having you stand your own. Can't do it, we're department, we can't do it.
I mean, this is a tough call.
Has anyone who's been sitting in the meetings represented in any way that Plain Township is on board with this, has given approval to this? Has anybody who's... What I'm concerned about is if they don't pass it, the next thing we're faced with is some kind of a lawsuit that says, "Well, wait, another was planning, there was this, there was that."
I think early on, some of these meetings, that we said, "The board has a final week, we're not gonna make a commitment," and it's been personal, we don't talk about it.
Okay, and the city of Canton did just for this, so, okay.
And I think that's kind of, I understand the meetings was, let's see what the city's gonna do with our, and whether it decided what the rules are.
Okay.
And I do know, you know, the chief said, "We can't make any of this until..."
Just out of curiosity, has the promoters been here to talk to the board?
No.
Nope. Well, we're not promoting this.
This is the worst time I've ever...
We serve you, okay? We're not here to promote this event. I'm not saying it's a bad event, I'm not saying that, but if you put this in lightness to the Hall of Fame, for example, we closed roads over there for a short period of time, and I know, Joe, you get some complaints, we always work through those things. By the way, those are short periods of time, sure. And there's benefits, if you said, just basis to the township as a result of those events, right? We're not here to argue any of that, we're not the promoter, we're not saying you should or shouldn't do it, we're trying to give you the facts, and I wish the promoter would come and talk to the hour.
About 10, like, four hours of people can't get their home.
Or get out to go to church. To go to church. God forbid they're gonna be sick.
I don't have any problem.
This...
I'd say yank it. I'm not comfortable with it. I don't have a problem with it.
This is the first time I'm learning that these people are over here to be inconvenienced for this period of time, while they're presenting to the city of Canton.
I have no problem with it. There's no benefit to it.
I know, what does it do to affect you guys? Does it affect you guys now, being, we're not gonna try to make... No, we have been working, you know, a little, and these staff members have gone to every meeting and tried to pose every question we could and answer, you know, in advance these issues, to try to get it cleared up, and some have been cleared up, frankly, in fairness, there's, I mean, some things have been cleared up, but there's still a few lingering issues. One of them is that, you know, some of the finances, how things are gonna be properly paid for, and then I think there's a couple other issues, but nothing that, I don't think we can work through, can't work through rather, but...
Well, sheriff, let me ask you this, if this board were saying they're not gonna endorse this or be involved in this, and therefore you're not going to either, I had heard Sergeant Darrow, I'm sorry what your title is, Lieutenant Darrow, I had heard Lieutenant Darrow reference the two options, one, they don't do it, two, they kind of do it without, well, they can't, can they? They can't shut roads, they don't need authority to do that.
They need your authority.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
Do you see us, is this a good move towards, are we doing anything at this point now? Are we waiting to this point to bail out? I mean...
I was gonna say, because at the end of the day, a finalized concrete, solid plan, timely, accurate communications...
But the whole thing is org, I'm sorry, I didn't mean your...
No, no, no.
But it's organized, correct? We're all working, we just need to just, well, we shut roads up, this thing's up and ready to go, organized and ready.
Is anybody in the process to reroute it?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No. Okay, because they have to certify some of the races, so they don't have the time to do that.
They don't have time to do it?
Not to reroute it for the marathon. Now, remember, two of the three races will, are in the, two of the three are strictly in the city of Canton, would not affect the township at all. So I guess they would have a third option is not to have the marathon, or they have to do the marathon. They can still do their two races in the city of Canton. You know, I would feel better for the board, just speaking handily, if the promoter had come here and given this some time to vet through, and they do have some public speaks coming in, and let these people who are going to be affected say, "Yes, this is great, we love it," or, "No, I can't get out, I gotta, you know, take my dog to the vet," whatever. And we really, you really haven't had that opportunity, which concerns me.
This race originally was supposed to happen in June, and we stopped that. Because not, no one had enough time to organize, no departments, no cities, the township. And they moved it till September, because of that reason.
And I just want to remind the board of a couple times, like, last year with the Canton Marathon, we were able to give notice in our newsletter, we had notice on our website, we were able to refer people to the promoters. Even when we did our bicentennial parade, and we knew for what an hour we may inconvenience people, we gave notice in our newsletter, we did press releases. We mailed to the houses who were going to not be able to get out of their driveway for maybe an hour multiple times. And we're talking, that was not very many residents for a very short period of time. And even then, we still got complaints, and that was so very, very small. So, typically, the board, when they're aware of something of this magnitude, you have used multiple venues to let, to make your residents aware of what was coming. The newsletter, which hits every resident, our website, mailings, so... The door hanger really isn't quite enough of a notice.
A couple things, I mean, this has changed a couple times since the start. We've never been given actual face-to-face contact with promoters. This is the first time I'm learning that those people on this route are gonna be inconvenienced from 7:40 a.m. to 12:25 p.m. There is absolutely no benefit to those residents, or to the community as a whole, by allowing this thing to these people to be inconvenienced by this. There is no benefit to the community at all, and inconvenience our resident for that period of time. I'm just saying, from this person's perspective, I'm in favor. You know, sometimes it comes down to maybe tough choices, but to me, this is not a tough choice. This thing, we're supposed to be protecting our people, not inconveniencing them. Well, I think, I mean, it's too, protecting and inconveniencing is two different things, I still, but, I mean, that all summed up, at the end of the day, it's like a timely plan, planning. I think we've beat this thing to bloody pulp here at this rate, so... I say it right now, no. From my perspective, is this one individual, it's not also? Yeah, I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put into this, but...
We're not, we're not giving any time here, right here. City said no.
Says no, if they don't get there.
If they're not paid upfront. It's not, it's, that's not going to be...
Well, because they told them a year ago, they don't want them back. It's like the Son of Jackson, didn't they?
I'm personally just worried that these people could come back on the township, if we don't do this. So I think we need to think about that. Sponsorships and this promoter.
That's fine, we'll continue this later in the agenda.
You have never, the three on the agenda.
Okay, the third thing on the agenda, our detective getting handled, take notes of. I received a email today for speeding on... Chat? You aware?
I am.
Okay. I talked to Joe, Joe said that we can get the speed buggy out there on Thursday as soon as we got it somewhere else, so then, we'll get that speed buggy out there, first here Friday sometime, you're ready?
I'll have it out for two days, in each direction. Makes this road long southbound, so we'll leave it southbound for today.
Okay. Okay, does anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns for the sheriff's representatives? Okay, Matt, we will go to our first detective's report.
Good evening, everyone. I picked out a mail list, I hope everybody got a copy. We went over July's numbers for Plain Township units. Had 735 calls for service, 57 crash reports, 22 crash reports with injury. Again, responded to 103 alarms, initiated 121 traffic stops. Out of those 121 traffic stops, issued 72 citations. A lot of these traffic stops were initiated from getting the speed reports for going to those areas. We also had 39 arrests, 21 summons, and 18 bookings. So far this year, we've had three fatalities resulting from crashes in the township, and all three had alcohol involved. So we'll go over the previous stat months, you know, for the first meeting. This is the first, hopefully, we can resolve these.
Okay, well, thanks for putting some metrics behind it. For us, you know, you see you busy, but sometimes you need to measure everything, your entire activity. Makes it a lot easier for our constituents.
It's nice to get a monthly report.
And that monthly report, I think, should be put on the website. I mean, if we can take a snippet, you know, that breakdown, Facebook or whatever.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just keep up the good work.
And the good communication.
Yes.
That ends the detective's report.
Let's go to unfinished business.
Thank you, unfinished business number one is the resolution to approve the attached Linford Avenue Storm Sewer Project Final Design Services Cost Proposal, and to authorize payment to the MEIBI group in an amount not to exceed $29,500 to be paid from Fund 01M03C.
So move.
Seconded, discussion?
Yes, we are, Joe and I have talked about this. We are provide, we are applying for OPWC funds for the Linford project. To date, we have applied probably, oh, how many times? Four times. And we think that our application will be much stronger, and we will receive the maximum points under one specific category. If we have Final Design Engineering Services, it's going to strengthen our OPWC application. So that's what this will allow us to do. I think the total cost for the Linford project that we're asking for grant monies...
1.3?
Yes, 1.3 million. So this is a very small amount to be asking for, to really strengthen our application.
We'll use the matching funds that we've discussed.
Yeah.
Adding more money is not gonna give us more points.
And the exact number of homes this affects, just for the record?
It's a lot of homes, it's on our... They have had some severe...
Maybe one or 50, probably 60, but...
Yeah, they've had some severe flooding issues. No, so, yes, adding, the township committing more funds to the project is not gonna help. Having a completed design done will strengthen this application. No, but we are, it was a good fight, yes.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Number call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution to adopt the 2014 Alternative Tax Budget.
Awesome, awesome move, unfinished business number two.
Second, discussion?
Just to reinforce good work by the department heads on point together, getting going in with a budget that's approximately a million dollars less than 2013 with carryover. Not too many communities are out there talking about it, so, good work by our staff.
Especially the level of services we provided. Or cost, too, so, anything else, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number three for discussion is in regards to the Wheeling Lake Erie Railroad. I do want to let the board know, and then I'll, of course, turn it over to the board for discussion. I did have some communication with Senator Kirk Schering this evening. He is aware of the Health Department's order for cleanup. He did want the board to keep an open mind, in case some sort of resolution could take place, not asking the board to expend, you know, a lot of money. If there could be a resolution that could take place for some sort of cleanup, to be open-minded to that. He's still working on that, so it doesn't end up in the court system for years and years and years. And I said, the board would always be open-minded to some sort of solution, depending, you know, on what that would be. So, with that, I'll turn that over to the board for any sort of discussion about what has transpired.
I'll just, I think since the Health Department has initiated this, and this is in the hands of the County Prosecutor's Office, I think communication should take place between Wheeling, I mean, between the railroad, the county prosecutor, and the Health Department at this point. It's my understanding they have jurisdiction. And at this point, I don't think the board should do anything but sit back and let that situation play itself out. Kirk Schering could also make contact with the Health Department and the County Prosecutor's Office. I have no further comment, I'll let it be known through the media already, so...
Yes. Okay, that ends unfinished business.
Thank you, let's go to new business.
Thank you, item number one under new business is the yard waste recycling facilities. And just to let the board know, and it'll be in our newsletter, that starting October 7th, 2013, we will be open Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., Saturday from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. We will close for all holidays, Columbus, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, weekend. And then it will resume starting December 2nd, Monday, Thursday, and Saturday. And again, Wester Brothers Landscaping will be open seven days a week until January 10th. We have drastically reduced any sort of overtime that we have needed from any other departments, based on the quality of the work that our road department does, when they come in, clean it up, helping our people load and unload. So I think between my department and Joe's department, we have a very good system in place. Everybody loves the yard waste recycling, and again, that'll be in the newsletter.
Real quick, did we, did we run into problems during Thanksgiving weekend? I can't remember, did we? End up on that and opening it, Joe?
I'm just one of those, it's a week number two.
Yes, weather dependent, and usually, if we know it's gonna be nice weather, we work with the fire station, and they'll lock that.
We see people backed up there in the back, and they just don't know.
Safer to do that than then have them come haul stuff in front of the camp.
Yes, which will happen.
You had that happen before.
Yeah. All right, then, item number two is a resolution to purchase corrugated awnings, not to exceed the price of $12,069 from Colt Myers Awnings at the state term contract price from Fund 01B02.
I'm gonna move on to new business number two.
I'm gonna second it.
These are the awnings for the Diamond Sports Complex?
Um, discussion. I'm assuming these are made out of cloth, a material, a mesh, or a vinyl?
The material is actually corrugated metal.
Because you can't tell them it's a picture.
Yeah, the picture's very, I have some copies here that show what it is.
This part's cloth, the drop, the drop-down part is cloth? This part's probably not.
Same material that the building is made out of, so it'll mesh almost seamlessly with the, you know, what the building is right now.
But then this drop part is cloth, correct?
Yes, there's a fringe on the bottom that is a cloth.
So, we're starting to talk, and we had friends, we're not talking concessions or...
No, that's for the entrance, the windows, the concessions.
And it would have the same, like...
Over the concessions window, it would say concessions.
Okay.
And then both, both doors on the side, the doors on the side are where the community room is.
It's gonna be there too.
Oftentimes, we have found, and, and, Mr. Geovasis, you had this idea, you have talked about awnings for years, because we're playing on our fields, we have a wonderful concession facility, and it's not labeled at all. People come to our community room, they're not sure where it is. They'll dress up the building, they'll labels the building. We get so very many outside tournaments, events.
From the color, color action, I don't know.
I researched the color for concessions, they said red, yellow, or orange, stimulates digestion, makes you hungry, we went with bread.
Outside of Diamond?
Well, it's part of your concessions, and we wanted all the same color.
Sorry, I'm just gonna have, in township, it's just Diamond Sports Complex. I just know from the branding.
Those are the logos, we talked about putting the logos on the side. Yeah, it's hard to see them.
The logos would...
It says it out there. But I, I would, I'd rather that say something along the lines of...
Boy, the logos will be on it.
Boy, the Dodge and the Door Sports Complex or something. I would rather, because I agree, we need to start branding, or parksism is one.
But it's in our township park, there's a sign inside that says...
You're right, but it says Schneider Park going into Schneider Park, but I don't see people coming up.
We'd say the Stark Parks have got a wonderful park over there. Because, because of the trails to their people.
I think we need to come up with a logo for the parks and start branding them. Even if that means that we have to put something a lot on the side of the wall. I do agree, we need to start branding the facilities.
That's something they can look at. Let's do one, maybe a Plain Township, just say Plain Township above, above four.
Letters, letters that say Plain Township.
I come out through some of it, and that's...
Okay, any further discussion? Matt, roll call, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
All right, item number three under new business is a resolution to approve and authorize payment to the Carl J. Russo Cement Contractor to install ADA, an ADA sidewalk at Schneider Park, and the amount not to exceed $4,900 from Fund 01B02.
That's it.
Also move, new business number three.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is for the ADA sidewalk by the restroom.
I did get two quotes, the other quotes not on here, so...
As far as, and this is something we can't do at House because of...
It's just too much, we're gonna help by just taking it out, and then they're gonna pour it, it's just too much for my guys. It's 300 feet of sidewalk coming down that hill. We got a lot of park things to do in between there, so, Derek gave me a list today.
Tie a mess with the ADA compliant elevator and the fire station. At least the sidewalk will be used. At least the sidewalk will be used.
We have an ADA, we have an ADA swing set and playground that is used, so it actually does make sense. And that's the end of new business.
Roll calls.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the fiscal officer for department's reflects.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up on the fiscal office report is request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize payment pending warrants in an amount of $394, or $394,860.29 is attached here too and made part of the minutes.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment for the following medical claims provided by Benefit Services.
So moved before you pay. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the financial report for the end of July. Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Who's on that second? I'm sorry.
I did.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments for emergency medical services as requested by the Plain Township Fire Department.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that will conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Let's go to the administrator for reports to campaign.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution for the printing of the Plain Township newsletter not to exceed $3,000.
So moved. Second, any discussion?
I mean, just in the design, I know you guys are working on it in-house. Is there any consideration or is it viable to utilize the high school? Do they have any type of programs over there through their business?
I could contact them.
Is it worth exploring?
It's worth exploring. This time, I am teaching Joyce and Linda how to do it. I do like having the idea of having some backup on this side. I'll see how they do this time, and school will start, so that'll make some contacts. So it's not a bad idea. That's, you know, it's a good idea. I'll make that contact, but I want to get them trained on it first. Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution for the postage for the fall newsletter not to exceed $3,000.
I would say move to administrative two.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Administrator number three is a resolution to authorize payment to Warslers Brothers Landscaping for composting in an amount not to exceed $2,925.
So moved. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yep.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution to authorize the Plain Township Administrator to enter into contract with the Stark County Sheriff to provide a school resource officer to the Plain Local School District for the 2013-14 school year in an amount not to exceed $50,212.91. And be it further resolved that the Plain Local School District shall reimburse Plain Township in an amount equal to one half of the account of the contract not to exceed $25,106.46.
I will move. I will second it. Discussion?
The contract price has not changed since last year, and it was at the joint thing when the board received the packet with all of the reviews of our SRO officer, which were fantastic.
And the overall cost savings, like I've said many times, cannot be quantified because the fact that this individual is in the schools, it reduces the need from us taking officers off the street to respond to schools in a lot of cases. So it's like having additional officers off the street because we're not receiving those calls.
And he has actually reduced incidents from happening at the school. The kids love him. They feel safe with him. They report any incidences to him before they occur. He's just a wonderful person and benefit to have to that school, so.
Anything else? Unroll call, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number six is the resolution to approve the purchase of four DXA5972 2300 watt world hand dryer, hand dryers from Graybar Company for the Schneider Park restrooms at a cost not to exceed $1,981.48.
So moved. Second, discussion?
These were just not included in the restroom. These are the high-powered hand dryers that are designed for that restroom. I know we've all used those. When you put your hand under there, you can see your skin actually move. I was adamant about these in the restroom, so we don't have wet floors, so people can't slip. It'll reduce the dirt, the mud, everything. They're very, very good hand dryers.
These are being covered by the.
Yes.
The funds.
It absolutely is.
Okay, coverage will, roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And finally, my last resolution is for the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the disposal at scrap value of two $2,000 for four Crown Victoria Police Cruisers.
So moved. Second, discussion?
Yes.
What would this take us down to?
I, yeah, I'd have to pull that from my office. These ones have been off here and replaced for a long time.
These are the ones parked out there by the dumpsters?
No, these actually have been down at the Road Department.
They're older notes, because I notice, I think that's where the, they go.
The ones by the dumpsters are probably just a huge hint.
Yeah, Paul made sure they got to the Road Department.
Yeah, but everything's been removed from them. They are not safe to put on gov deals. It's, it's, we can't, they've just got to go.
And we've set aside a budget for.
Two new cruisers and I have the club.
All right, no further discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And I am finally finished.
Thank you. Let's go to the fire department.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report.
Oh, my gosh, I have to take that back and interrupt our chief. I want to just take over the whole meeting tonight, and I missed my number four, which is exciting news. And Joe's so excited, told me the first one to line up. But on October 1st, we are holding and sponsoring with Alt Care, a low-cost flu clinic for the Plain Township community. The trustees are sponsoring this with Alt Care. There's no cost to Plain Township. It's going to be held at fire station number five. The cost of the flu shots, it's for 18 years and older, are $20. That's less than most people's co-pays when they go to the physician's office to get the flu shot. We will put that in our newsletter, but again, it's a very inexpensive way to get a flu shot right here in your own community. Station number five, and now I am the administrative report.
So that'll be at station five?
Yes.
Nothing on the other side?
I can ask. I'm sure they will. At a different time, this is October 1st. I can see that maybe a week later, absolutely.
If there's something on the other side, it's for station one.
That's fine. They would be.
Station one, whatever.
Station one? Yeah, that's fine. If three has more room, we'll need more room, but I'll set that up and it will be in our newsletter. All right, Chief, back to the very exciting monthly report.
Item number one is the monthly report.
See, those have leveled out by the.
A little bit.
Okay, if anybody has any questions for the chief, they can get with him. Let's go to number two, chief.
Okay, item number two, report is a resolution for change of work from general contractor for additional work. It's a ceramic tile. It's going to be between the counter and the upper cabinets. Big chance there is with the fire station. So moved to the fire department, too.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And we'll go to this zoning novel. That's Bruno? Well, because he's short. Today, he wants a monthly report. Apologize, Joe.
Item number one is the monthly report for July.
Some paving works coming along.
Yes, they're coming along. The plan for paving, striping should be happening tomorrow or Thursday. They're starting.
Anybody look at the new surfaces, that new process they're using?
I looked over at White, Whitewood, Joe told me. When they did it in the morning, I'll tell you what, the people with the work lights on, that looks.
Yeah, we didn't have much start because of all the traffic up there.
It actually looks, there's no seams. It doesn't have a seam like asphalt.
So far, I'm very happy.
You see, the longevity of the block holds.
Time will tell.
Item number two is a resolution to authorize the purchase of markets for needed repairs for unit 19 from truck sales and service.
Also moved.
Second, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Apologize for that. He stuck you so pretty much down. There's barely a little limit on the bottom there. And I need to squeeze out.
That's all I gave him.
Now we'll go to the zoning novel.
Okay, item number one is the monthly report for July, and we are hanging steady. I think we had seven, we were, well, we seem to be hanging in the seven, eight, nine. We had the 10 back in April, so we're right in line with pretty much everybody else.
Danny, do you know, based on these permits that are pulled, like how many remaining blocks sit available in these?
No, I'm trying to get some kind of a count through subdivision, because I know, you know, we have as far as preliminary slant subdivisions, and there was plating, and don't have any that count with veins that you know, three of them. And we're, Lexington is pulling up fast. Wicker Creek has moved very rapidly lately, and Saratoga's a little, we're doing good. I think we're making a definite dent in the vacant lots, so we have.
And Danny, did the property or did the Veterans Administration voluntary mobile home on Easter?
Someone did.
Somebody cut it.
Right. Yeah, it's early after the tree was cut there. It's been cut, because it looks like it's being maintained. No, so that's, glad to see that. I did, one evening I happened to notice, you know, a car sitting in the driveway, so maybe, maybe someone's taken it over. Hopefully, I don't have a nice little house there. Okay, number two, we do have 20 nuisance payments. Congratulations, Eric. Of these 20, 13 are repeats. And again, a lot of that is due, obviously, to the weather. It's a very rainy season. You're coming back around. These are the ones, in all likelihood, we'll only see them one more time.
Also move on zoning 2A through T.
I'll second it. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And just for your information, the months of May, June, and July, we processed over 270 places to be off. And that doesn't include the standard construction inspectors or anything else. We're going to, hope we're going to get our nose above the water level here soon. Item number three is nuisance payments. We have three.
I'll go on 3A through C.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Danny. Let's go to Parks and Facilities. Eric.
Parks and Facilities, number one, will be the July monthly report. I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to get some of this new, but things taken care of. All these nuisance properties are a lot easier now.
I'll go give you that, and I can give you a couple more.
I'll do that. That's fine. We'll land on whatever you throw at us. Be careful.
Well, I'm trying to handle whatever it is.
Like water bottle.
Yeah, it's used quite, quite often now. I've seen some soccer games up there with kids in line, actually, with some filler bottles.
Okay. Let's get to the big one here.
Item number two on Parks and Facilities, the purchase of a Grounds Master 4700D. Be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the purchase of a Grounds Master 4700D not to exceed the total price of $55,928.2 for the century equipment at the STS contract price, and authorize payment to Fund 01B06.
Also move on Parks number two. Second, discussion? This is replacing the, how old?
The Jacobson is 11 years old now. The hours are low just because of where it's used. It has almost 2,000 hours on it, but just the years and the wear and tear.
The maintenance cost. And we're actually paying less for this more than we did for this other one.
Yes, it's almost $20,000 less than.
What we paid for the other one?
Just to remind the board, I had created a line item in the budget, and we, this was part of our.
Alternative work.
Yes, our alternative task budget, and it's something that had been planned for, for several years, so.
I think, Joe, we met with the mechanic, and Scott was there, so did he say that this was just, just two marks of, he just constantly keep broken on it?
Yes.
Roll call.
Do we have the motion for that?
Yeah, I believe I. Do we have a second?
Sorry, Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that concludes Parks and Facilities.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing under law director communications. From that, go to the portion of our agenda for public speaks. This time, if anybody has any issues they would like to address the board, they may do so at this time. They only ask that you give your name and address to the fiscal officer clearly, so we can have your name for the record. If anybody has anything, you may do so.
Yes, I'm Jim Schrader, I live at 1384 Apple Grove, 100 feet from Sugar Bush. I was real happy when you guys wrote the home rule with the dogs, and I felt you finally had something that would force them to take some measures to abate the noise they create there, talking about Sugar Bush kennels, of course. And the sheriff deputy was out, and he advised me that, that even though the way the rule reads, that Sugar Bush is exempt from that.
Which I thought it would cover, too, myself.
I guess I think from reading the language in your notice, I mean, he's a licensed kennel and he's in a residential area, the sheriff deputy thought he was in a rural area, but I'm, we're Zellman residential. How can he be exempt from which you move?
Well, I think that with Sugar Bush, and Sugar Bush alone, that kennel's been in existence before zoning even came into existence in Plain Township.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but I mean.
I am sure about it.
I lived there for 40 years, and I lived there before the kennel, and I know, he says he was first, but he wasn't. And I moved there in 72, and at that time, there was a man who lived there that raised burner spaniels and had a very small operation, and about '78 or '79 they built that kennel. I know somewhere around '73, I think he got a permit to build that, and it built about '78. But is there anything we can do there to resolve this? I mean, about five hours, six hours every day, solid barking to 20, 30.
What are the hours from that occurs?
7:00 AM to 8:30, noon to 1:30, 4:00 to 5:30.
Do you know why it's that way? Is that because of the dogs?
He exercises the dogs.
Okay.
And they go out there, I can hear it, I can hear their voices hollering over the dogs. You know, when it's past that, that tiny rule was you only had to notify the adjacent owners to that property.
Right.
Being a mile 100 feet away.
Right.
You know, not notified that I have a chance of getting ahead.
Do you, is it an hours of operation issue for you, or is it just the barking at all? Or what?
It's, you know, deer barking and other time of the day, and that's understandable and that's part of it, but we have those periods of time when those, every dog in there is barking at full strength for an hour and a half. We cannot use our back deck in the evening, we cannot plan any activity, we have people on our house between 4:00 and 6:30, between 4:00 and 5:30. It's just, you know, when you go over there and try to talk to the people, and they're kind of smug, they have a nice soundproof office going to your area, and the dogs are quieter in their facility than they are in my house, because they built themselves a soundproof facility, they can sit in and enjoy the quiet, but you don't respect the quiet of them.
What's the enclosure there? Is it just a chain link fence, or what's the, do you know what?
Yeah, there's a fence in there where the dogs are sized outside, and it's on the, it's on the east side of the property. The building be soundproof, like you do soundproof for an office, I mean, there's got to be something that can be done. Any gentlemen like to be in my deck, I vote, I'll be to talk to my house at 4 o'clock in the day and appreciate the problem.
Let me do this, I, we had some correspondence with Sugar Bush, it's been a while, and I know they were represented by an attorney locally here, let me call him and address some of what you're saying with regard to the times and that incessant, you know, hour and a half period where they all seem to be going at once and the soundproof issue. Let me make that call, see if they're interested in talking. If we ascertain that they're not, we probably need to talk again. I know that we try to encompass all these things, but it doesn't always work out the way we planned for it, so if you're okay with that, I'd like to at least try to contact.
Yeah, and anything, like, if you try to calm down, they work today, I understand, it's not an issue, but it's just this hour and a half, three times a day.
Okay. Does someone here have your contact information? Is it Lisa or somebody? You don't have to get it on the record, but does somebody?
Well, I did talk to Lisa one time, and you did take my number, what do you have that on?
Okay, when we break, I'll get your number if that's okay, we're almost done with your agenda here, I'll just get your name and number.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Is anybody else? All right, well, that'll close public speaks. We will, any concerns, trustees? All right, we will go to approval of the minutes, regular meeting of July 23rd, 2013, and I will so move. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
I'll also move the special meeting of August 6th, 2013. Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
I'll move on the special meeting of August 7th, 2013.
Second those. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And then also move on, special meeting August 9th.
Second those. Roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, there is a need for an executive session. Be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to adjourn the executive session at 7:18 PM from this regular meeting of August 13th, as authorized under Ohio Revise Code, 1 to 1.22G for purposes in consideration of, 1A, appointment of a public employer official, B, employment of a public employer official, C, compensation of a public employer official, and 3, conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning pending or imminent tort action. Second. Any discussion?